Good evening, everybody. I appreciate you all joining us for our December 4th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. And we'll start things off. I'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Covert will lead us in invocation.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. We are the republic which is famous. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we just come to you tonight asking for your wisdom in these decisions here tonight. Father, we ask for your blessing on this country and on our government, on our city government. And we ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Again, thank you all for joining us. I'll call this meeting to order, and if we can do roll call, please. Here.
Roy Covert.
Here.
Vivi Haney.
Here.
Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker.
Here.
Kevin Parsley.
Here.
Aaron Panado.
Brian Powell.
Here.
David, Dale Tyler.
All right, thank you. Any questions with the minutes from November?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Haney, a second by Mr. Covert. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. First thing I'll call outs on here, in the event that people are here for this, we have two withdrawals and one tabled item. The tabled item, B-17-66 Harrison French &amp; Associates, 4870 Elm Springs Road, is the last item on the agenda, a variance for sign ordinance that has been tabled per the client here. And the two that have been withdrawn, and I'll ask Patsy to give an explanation on this, B-17-63 Rousch-Coman Homes, 2568 Seabright Avenue, and then B-17-64 Rousch-Coman Homes, 7633 Bridgegate Avenue, both of those for variance for temporary construction office.
The representative from Rousch-Coman was in the office this afternoon. It's indicated they're withdrawing that request. They will not have temporary construction offices at either of those locations, and they have two weeks to remove the structure that's there at that one location. So they're not bringing it back up, and we won't have temporary construction offices.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that if you are here for that particular item, that will not be heard at all on the agenda. The only other one that has been tabled per staff is a conditional use, C-17-15 EcoSite LLC, 2894 West Sunset. Other than that, we will start with the public hearing item, proposed amendment to Chapter 32 Downtown Form-Based Code to amend Section 2.1 regulating plan to revise boundary of neighborhood residential type 3.
I provided you with maps, and you can see it highlighted in this area on the map that you see on the wall. The lots that are on the south side of Grove Avenue that contain single-family, they were originally included in Neighborhood Center Type 1, no, Type 2, I'm sorry, they are single-family homes. We have had some interest in that area of development wanting to maintain those homes. And because of the size and the cost of remodeling it, we put them in a situation where they have to bring them up to code in order to be able to do that. The cost and the sizes make them where they would have to bring the entire thing into compliance, and a single-family home is not allowed in a Neighborhood Center Type 2. So what we're doing is moving those back into a neighborhood residential area so that those single homes can remain. While we were going through all this development process, that area was one we were really not sure which way it was going to go, so we put it into the other category, and that's the only amendment that's being made to the regulatory plan right now. I'll answer any questions if anybody has anything about that.
This opened up to the audience now. Any questions or comments that you have on this? Okay, it's to the commission.
This would be a recommendation to City Council to approve this amendment to the Form-Based Code.
Make a motion to forward to City Council for approval.
Motion by Mrs. Haney. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell. Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
That passes 6-0.
It will go to council next Tuesday evening.
Next section, tabled items, C-17-10 Rob Mooney, 2246 East Robinson Avenue, used unit 41, automotive sales in C2, presented by Jose Andrade. If you'll come to the mic.
Okay.
We'd like to open up-
If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, that's, I'm Daniel Benitez. I'm partner with Jose Andrade.
Okay, now wait a minute. We got to see that you're authorized to represent this request.
Venga, venga, usted con interpretar, man.
Oh, they're both are here already?
Yeah.
Okay, never mind. He's here too. Okay. Aaron, do you have the drawing that was submitted that you can put up there to show how they want to lay this out?
I'm going, I'm going to interpret for him.
Might want to just move that mic down a little bit, so.
Is that mic on? Okay, we're good.
It's on.
We're good.
All right, if you want to tell us what we're wanting to do here.
He wants to open a car lot, like a dealership, sell cars.
Okay.
And they will be used cars, correct?
Yes.
Now, you should have a drawing in your packet that shows how this is laid out.
Have comments on it?
The ingress and egress to the property is acceptable. The off-street parking and loading areas were required with particular attention to the items mentioned above seem to be acceptable. The driveway is of adequate width. They moved the parking back far enough that things can maneuver on the site. The refuse and service areas are acceptable. Utilities are acceptable. There's screening and buffering. You don't show any screening or buffering to the north, which would be required because of the residential to the north. The sign, you're using an existing sign that's out there, correct?
Both signs, yes.
Okay. The yard requirements-
And he knows about the screening?
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to, it needs to be identified. You have a location for a dot for a sign. It doesn't tell us what the sign is or what it's going to look like. Are you only using the existing sign and adding to it, or are you adding another sign onto that one?
I think, yeah, we're going to use another sign and like just add it to that one.
Okay, you need to get with the building inspector to make sure that that can happen to get a sign permit if you're approved.
Okay.
The yard requirements and open space requirements seem to be acceptable. Are you proposing any landscaping on this site at all?
No.
No landscaping? Okay. The general compatibility seems to be acceptable. It has to have paving and striping required as shown on the site plan. All those areas need to be paved where you're going to have vehicles moving around or parking. And the striping plan that you show on there, it needs to be, and then screening is required to the residential units to the north.
Okay. Do you guys want these?
Yes.
Yeah.
So the landscaping piece, I mean, because, I mean, because this would be a conditional use.
Yeah.
Not necessarily a requirement.
Right.
Okay.
But as conditions of granting the conditional use.
They want to add some landscaping requirement.
Okay. Just want to make sure we were interpreting that correctly. All right, anything else? Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote. Oh, I'm so sorry, go ahead.
On the landscaping, can we, you know, because it's going to be a conditional use with a car lot, and there's going to be, is my calling?
Yeah.
It's on. There's going to be so much, you know, just cars there. Is there a way that we can get some landscaping on the sides? You know, I wouldn't want to go so much in the very, very front where, when you're coming out, it would affect the line of sight of someone coming out with a car. But this area especially, you know, in front of the building, and then, you know, back enough from the road to where there's-
Yeah, we can, we can put some landscaping.
Okay, then you will need to provide us with a landscaping plan so we can see what you're going to put in.
Okay.
Does the paving now, what area on there is now paved? It's paved right up to the building, correct?
It's up until the end of the street. Yeah, it's paved right up to the building.
So we're not asking, Vivi, you're not asking for any foundation landscaping? You're asking for landscaping on the sides?
No, just, right, on the sides, so that when you're driving by and you see that, there's not just-
Okay, you understand landscaping on that green strip that's on each side of the parking lots to put some landscaping in there?
On each green side?
Not all the way up to the street, because we don't want to create a hazard for people moving in and out where you can't see around it.
Okay. And do you need a landscaping plan?
Plan. You need to show us what you're going to use, what type of material, what plans you're going to put in there so we'll know what's going in there.
Okay, and when do we need to provide this?
Need to bring it to the office. You know, you won't get approved conditional use until we get that. If that, if that is what is approved here, and the council sticks with it too.
Okay.
Patsy, is there someone on staff that she might be able to reach out to to help guide her on that?
We do have a landscape architect on staff, so it's Steve Hatfield. You might call Steve and talk to him about what kind of materials might work better.
Okay.
He can help you with the plan, putting it together.
You said Steve?
Hatfield.
Hatfield.
And was there questions on the screening?
Well, they'll have to meet the screening requirements of the type of fencing that it is. Have to be an opaque fence, and there's listed in the ordinance what can and can't be used material. They'll have to let us know what material they're going to use.
Any questions you have about that?
What exactly do you mean by the screening? Like a fence?
A fence, right.
Okay, he has to put a fence, and he has to provide what type of material he would use?
Yes, and there is a list in the ordinance. When you talk to Steve, ask him to give you the materials that can be used for that fence too.
Okay.
And then as far as the paved area, that's the only area allowed as far as the parking of the vehicles. So in the rear of the building, where there is not paved parking, there cannot be cars put back there.
We had that discussion from the beginning. You can only put cars on paved surfaces.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure you guys are clear about that, because this is a conditional use, and that could be grounds as far as dismissal of that.
Okay.
Okay, I wouldn't want you guys to invest in this and then have that going down the road, okay?
Yeah.
Any other questions on this? I think, and then the only other one is the signage, like Patsy brought up.
Yeah.
That that would have to be approved by building inspection.
Yeah, they'll have to get a sign permit if you're going to change the sign.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Nothing.
No.
It's be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes. Additional use passes 6-0. And just work with the planning office. They'll help you through all of these on here, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next section, public hearing rezoning. First item of rezoning, R-17-31 AMW Technology LLC, 1906 Lowell Roads, from I-1 to C-2, presented by Luis Sosa.
Yes, my name's Luis Sosa, 1906 Lowell Road.
Actually, you said the C-2, not C-1. The agenda says, one is from I, okay, the one on the table. On the table says C-2, okay, I was reading off of the old.
Yeah, well, it's not right.
I-1 to C-2.
Right. And that would I?
I don't know, I just, I was making a note over here, and then I wanted to make sure I wasn't paying attention, sorry. Trying to, I shuffled this so many times today, I was out of order, so I was in a panic for a second.
Do you want to tell us a little bit more about this?
Well, I owned that property for probably four years, and I paved the front parking. And the last two years, it's been empty. I haven't done anything with it. I used to have a business, it was a machine shop, but I have another job in Fayetteville, so, you know, the last two years, it's just been sitting as a warehouse.
Okay.
Okay, and you paved in accordance to what you needed for paved parking for the warehouse for the bill of assurance that you got in 2014?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was going to be one of my questions. And you realize that if you put, and you're, you're also asking for conditional use for automotive sales at this location?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you can only park cars on paved surfaces, so right now, you're going to be limited to just that area that's paved?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes. Now, in the future, I'd like to keep adding on.
Okay, let's talk about the zoning first, then we'll go to the other part. The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates light industrial warehouse use for this area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and improper locations, and provide the viability of older commercial properties as well as new commercial developments. Years ago, that we had an I-1 zone that would allow commercial activities in it, and when we have redesigned those districts over the years, we took the commercial activities out of the industrial, so it's kind of a, kind of a shade, an area that's kind of transitioned over the years. And I think we probably need to consider the conditional use at the same time.
Yeah, no, it's fine. So I can go ahead and read that one for the record. Also considering C-17-16 AMW Technology LLC, conditional use, 1906 Lowell Roads, used unit 41, automotive sales in C-2, so.
Talk about that before.
Yeah, any other comments on that one?
The only question I still have is, is there a sign out there, or do you intend to put a sign?
You know, there was a sign in there, but it was in the office space up on top. There was a, that's where I had my sign right there.
Okay, do you intend to put any other kind of sign on the property?
No, just, just in the building.
It would just be on the building itself?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and do you propose any landscaping?
Uh, no.
Okay. The general compatibility with adjacent property is acceptable with the following conditions. No other business activity at this location other than automotive sales. Vehicle storage inside structure subject to the fire code requirements, and the outside is restricted to the paved areas only, and must meet any screening requirements. And if the structure is to be used for auto services, access and parking must be paved.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Will you be, if you're going to use this for an auto dealership, will you plan on fencing your area for security?
Uh, yes, I was going to fence the back.
Okay, and we have requirements for fencing, so we need to make sure you-
Yes.
Okay.
Would you be willing to consider some screening, some landscape, not screening, but landscaping?
Sure.
Across on the corners, you know, nothing where it's going to be hitting the line of sight, but similar to what we were discussing with the other property.
Yeah, I can do that, that's, I don't have a problem.
Since it's going to be a conditional use.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
Okay, you haven't proposed any, but you're saying you would be willing to do some landscaping?
Yeah.
Okay, then I need you to submit a landscaping plan so we know what you're going to do.
Okay.
Now, what additional areas do you intend to pay for auto sales right now?
Well, the parking lot, I was going to use the parking lot because I think Debbie said something, you guys will let me know how many cars I can have there. I'm not looking to have maybe 10 cars at a time.
You have to have parking for customers who come in. So how many spaces do you have?
I got 12, 12 spaces.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? So you want to take these together or separate?
We need to do a separate because they're two different.
Okay. So call for the votes for rezoning.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Rezoning passes 6-0, and a conditional use.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Additional use passes 6-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance and the resolution to go to council, and it'll go next Tuesday evening, because the council's only meeting once this month.
Okay, so I'll come back next Tuesday?
It starts at 6:00 instead of the-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next rezoning, R-17-32 ISC Properties, 2200, 2300, 2400, south Olden Missouri Road, from I-1 to C-5, presented by Greg Edwards.
I'm with ISC Properties, and we are asking for a rezoning of the property that's on the screen.
Great. Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates regional commercial use for this area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Assure adequate land allocations for commercial areas of sufficient size and improper locations. Encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
So a quick question, I don't know if I can ask this on a rezoning like this. With the existing structures that are there from a sprinkling and a commercial, does that modify things based off of what it is industrial, moving that to a C-5?
I don't, I don't think unless they change the use, or, you know, if it goes to an assembly use or something like that, the fire code kicks in. Trades and services, which is the kind of things that they have in there, probably wouldn't kick any of that in. We went over the things that they have in the existing buildings. They all fit in commercial buildings and-
Yes, ma'am. Yes, they all fit.
Yeah, do I have to talk about anything else? I don't think the zoning changes any of that, it's the use of the property, correct?
Exactly.
You can change the zoning anywhere in the city you want, and when we go in and do the business license or check the bill, and that's when they're going to have to bring whatever they change the building.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, as far as if it's changed to a C-5, that could-
If they did an assembly in there, they may have to put in a different type of alarm system.
Okay.
And it's based on whatever the use is after it's rezoned, not the rezoning itself that kicks it in.
Okay.
Okay?
Just wanted to make sure that you knew what implications on that.
Yeah, we're aware of that.
Okay. Anything else? All right, any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, it's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney. Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rezoning passes 6-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council next Tuesday evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, R-17-33, The Rock of Northwest Arkansas Incorporated, northwest corner of I-49 and Don Tyson Parkway, from P-1 to C-5, presented by Barry Williams of Crafton and Toll.
Actually, I'm Bill Watkins. I'm an attorney in Rogers. You also have an authorization sheet for me to represent this matter before you. This is 8.81 acres at the northwest corner of I-49 and Don Tyson Parkway, as you can see. President's owning is P-1. We're asking for C-5. It fits in the character of the other uses that are in the area. It is in the ballpark overlay district, so my client understands that there are some additional regulations that may be imposed by the overlay district. This does conform with the land use plan, master street plan. I talked to Patsy about it last week. I think she told me staff supports it. You can see that by the report that's in your packet, I presume. And it, as she says in the report, it meets and is in keeping with various goals and policies of the city. I'd be happy to address any questions you have about the project.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates regional commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and improper locations. Encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Rezoning passes 6-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council next Tuesday evening. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, actually, next section, public hearing, conditional use. First one, C-17-14 Wilbur Flores, 1132 West Sunset, used unit 41, automotive sales in a C-2, presented by Wilbur Flores.
Hi, this is Wilbur Flores.
Hi, Julio Garcia.
Good.
Tell us what you want to do at this location.
Well, I want to transfer my car lot. I'm, I'm on Lowell right now, and I live in Springdale. My kids go to school in Springdale, so I want to put everything in here, this city, you know.
Okay. How much space do you see on this lot that would be available for putting a car lot?
Basically, what we're trying to do is, on the back has a warehouse, and we're trying to expand it as an internet car sales. And the people of the city planning, they said, in order, if the customer wanted to pay for the car, we need to have the dealership over there with a full license. That's the reason that we mainly wanted to use this as an internet warehouse sale, but the city of planning, they tell us that it needs to be as a dealership, the whole thing. And inside the warehouse, have a full capacity of 14 cars.
Are there cars for sale in the lot now?
No.
Ingress and egress to this property is very congested because there's so many operations on the site. How many other businesses are located at this location? I think at least three.
Yeah, what we're applying is the front one, is the one that, it is shutting down, Uh, yeah, what we're applying is the front one, is the one that, it is shutting down, the dish in our place, it is shutting down that place, and that's the one that we're taking.
Okay, off-street parking and loading areas are very limited. I don't know that there's enough space to put fourteen cars and move them in and out at that location. The utilities are acceptable at this location. Screening and buffering, there's not any screening that I was aware of to the properties to the north. There is an existing sign, and I'm assuming you would use the existing sign and not add another sign?
Yeah, the same one.
Uh-huh. Uh, the yard requirements are acceptable for biz, for commercial development, however, there are so many businesses on there, I don't know that all the yard requirements can be met. The size and shape makes it unacceptable. There is, there is no landscaping then proposed. My recommendation at this conditional use is unacceptable. The site contains three commercial uses with limited access, and there's not any available areas for display of automobiles for sale, and inside the building, I'm not sure you can maneuver to put that many vehicles in there.
Um, as I said, it was inside the warehouse.
Well, they gotta come in and out somehow. We do have two, uh, comments that have been submitted, and I think each of you have those. One is from, uh, the adjacent property owner next to it, Shane Rhodes, yes. They show, he indicates that he's opposed to the conditional use for the internet sales located at eleven thirty-two West Sunset Avenue. His concerns for this opposition are with children playing on the playground in a busy parking lot, along with cars blocking entrances and blocking view of, of his existing, and of exiting his place of business. I have many customers that are elderly and I'm concerned that one day someone is going to be hurt when they leave my place of business. With so many businesses located, this location parking has become too crowded. You can see in the pictures below that illustrate my concerns, and he did present those. I do have another, uh, one from Mike Lawson. He says, "I am emailing you about the public hearing on tonight's agenda. I have an interest somewhat, other than being contacted by citizens. I also run a business about three doors down at twelve forty-four. I will be out of town tonight and unable to attend. My concern is that this piece of property is wanting, is wanting an internet car lot. If you look at it already, it's multiple signs out front, and not sure if it's suitable size for another business. I get the fact that they will imply internet, meaning that there will be no cars on this lot, however, there already has been and are being sold, in my opinion. We, as well as the shelter office next door to this site, take great pride in the look of Springdale. I do not believe this site has the same concerns as most of us do, as far as appearance, and I believe community engagement has had issues at this very address recently. Also, I'm asking is to take a very hard look at this, at this, please. Thank you for your time. I truly appreciate your service," and it's Mike Lawson who submitted that one.
Misha, can you address any of the communication issues on this one?
We did address some complaints that we had over on the property. There's some unsightly, unsanitary, a few things around the trash can, they took care of those things. There were some cars for sale that were parked out there. We did give them a violation notice back in October that they needed to remove the unsightly, unsanitary, and get a business license for the vehicle sales, or remove the vehicles altogether. So, I believe that when, when our staff was there, the, the people in the front building said that the cars belonged to them, it was cars that they drove there. They were their personal cars and they were selling them, but they were their personal vehicles, that's how they, they were allowed to have any for sale. They couldn't prove that they were theirs, and so we required that they removed them or apply for a business license. That's probably why they're here.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
I, you know, from what I see, there's, it's just, there's just not an acceptable amount of space to do what you're wanting to do. You know, you, you state that you're gonna be doing, you're only gonna have something done in a building, and yet, that's not what's happening right now. And if you are having another location and you're gonna have to spend your time here, you're gonna be back and forth with vehicles from the other location.
Well, the thing is, if I get approved on this side, on Springdale, I'm just gonna close the other one, and I'm just gonna be here. And the, like you said, the warehouse, we have, like, inside it'll be fourteen cars, but the front of the warehouse is like for another eight or nine vehicles, is the one we was planning to use it. And whatever we, uh, we didn't fit in there, we just put it inside, and that was our plan.
So, if somebody wants the very back car, you're gonna have to move fourteen cars out to get it?
There's the four rows of cars, so we need to move three in the front, and just to pick the, the one out.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, I just think the space, if you find a lot that has more space, that's just the wrong location for that type of business.
Okay, and, and the other thing, my car lot, wherever I'm at right now, would normally keep like between eight to twelve cars at the most, personal, and, and like I said, that'll be, I, I look it up and I see the space, and maybe like four or five inside, and the rest of it'll be outside. It don't be much, uh, much to do to move it out, so...
I have a question for the fire marshal. Dwayne, have you looked at this building, can they park fourteen cars in that building? Like a lot of cars.
I have not been in that building. I've been in the front building and the building to the east, but I've never been in that, that warehouse. Did we do a conditional use out there? Did some of my personnel come out there and do a conditional use? Somebody from the fire department come to your building?
Yes.
They did? I apologize.
Recently?
Uh, probably like a year ago or two years ago.
Okay, but not to look at...
To, to inspect their...
Oh, no, it wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have been my office, it would have been the firemen and a fire truck, our company level.
That was just a routine inspection, that wasn't to look at the idea of putting fourteen cars in that building.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, I, I misunderstood.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I mean, for me, the concern is, is that the current property today, the fact that there has been violations, I mean, it's, it's really in, in my eyes, and I can't speak on behalf of the commission on this one, I mean, really showing due diligence as far as a, a good corporate citizen in Springdale, of maintaining the current property before, as far as adding any additional, uh, conditional use associated with that. So, I, I mean, that's the concern for me, and as far as being able to grant this to be used going forward, but that's just my comments, I can't speak on behalf of the rest of the, the planning commission on that, so... This will be a call for the vote. Call for the vote. Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
No.
Haney?
No.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
No.
Powell?
No.
The conditional use does not pass, six zero.
You have the right to appeal the planning commission's decision. It has to be filed with the city clerk within fifteen days. You have to indicate why you think the planning commission's decision is an error, and you have to notify all the adjacent property owners again.
Thank you.
And I would just make one more comment to you, Mr. Flores. Springdale would love to be able to have the business in that one, but again, it's, it's about the property and maintaining the, the current property with the, the current businesses that are there as well. So, I mean, I think if, if there can be some due diligence as far as improvements made on that, you know, Ms. Haney brought up some other concerns too. Not sure if this is the most conducive property for that volume of, of type of product to be in there, so, I just wanted that to be known out there. I mean, we, we do appreciate, I mean, that's a, the internet business is a very good one for automotive and, and that whole piece, but it just doesn't seem like the, the proper location for it. Okay? Thank you. Next item, C seventeen seventeen, Stephen Perotta and Mary Gillihan, parcel eight fifteen, three oh eight fifty-six, tandem lot split in A one, presented by Stephen and Mary.
Hi, my name's Steve Perotta. So, we bought a parcel of land from the Johnson family, it's about sixteen acres. We just wanted to split it so that we have six or seven acres and sell the rest to someone else interested in putting a house there.
Staff comments?
Uh, the requirement is to have paved access to, for a tandem lot. The access you have to the property now is on the south side, correct?
Right.
And it's not paved?
Right.
As a matter of fact, it's pretty rough?
Yes.
Okay. And then you would be required to pave that access easement all the way up to the second property that's being, uh, created? And that would be your only access to that piece of property, correct?
Right.
Okay, so you're ready to do that?
I mean, if we have to, we will. We didn't understand why we needed to, because there are a lot of properties that aren't paved, but, I mean, if that's the requirement, then we'll comply.
That's a requirement, and, and one of the things is so that, and Dwayne's coming this way, and I know what he's gonna say, needs to be able to provide access for emergency services to that. Right now, it's really hard to get to, and then you're creating a lot to the north of that, that's quite a bit further out. So, it, the requirement would be that it would have to be paved.
Okay.
Now, I tell you that so that, did you apply for a variance for that pavement?
I think we filled out the paperwork, but I don't think we submitted anything.
Okay. So, right now, the, the requirement would be if, if you are granted, if it's approved for a tandem lot split, and it goes to council and approve, you would have to pave it before you could actually file the split.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Question is, do you want to move forward with that, with that, with that?
Yes, yeah, we're willing to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, any questions or comments from the audience? If you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please. I'm sorry, Dwayne had other things on there, I'm sorry.
Any lots that serve by a single access that has more than two residential's or two utility buildings requires fire access to where it's less than the two. So, that means that you might have to provide fire access complying with the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, twenty foot wide, and if it's over a hundred and fifty feet, would require a turnaround.
Thanks, Dwayne.
My name is Mary Hart, I live at thirty-nine eleven Harper Lane. Well, I've lived there for, since nineteen eighty-six, so I've seen everything happen. This is my neighbor, Ron Harrison, he lives behind me at...
Three nine nine three.
If you can move up to the mic, I'm sorry.
He's at...
I live at three nine nine three Harper Lane, her neighbor.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm Donna Johnson, I live on four three oh five South Forty-eighth Street, so I'm just up the hill. Donna Johnson.
Okay.
Yes. So, we are neighbors and concerned parties that live adjacent to the potential. The, um, Harrisons have immediate border with this potential split.
Five acres.
Five acres. I just found out, we are out of code, apparently. There are four structures on Harper Lane. It is a dirt, or gravel, or Arkansas rock, however you want to put it, road. That original twenty acres was owned by Gene Harper. He split it back in ninety, eighty, eighty, nineties, late nineties, I think. And if you look at your drawing, you will see that there is a little drive that goes up, and there's some bare land up there, that happens to be my horse pasture. Next to that is a neighbor who is not here tonight, and next to that, the ugly piece of ground that fronts to the west of the property that he is talking about buying, is a red dirt pit. That has never been properly reclaimed over the years. We've complained and complained. Okay.
Do you want me to address this before you get a little further? They're not asking for any access off of your drive.
Do you, we know that, we know that.
All their access will be from the south?
We know where it is.
Up to that, okay.
Okay. My concern is, is you're gonna have him pave all of that to suit your fire trucks. So, where does that leave us who have lived on that hill for the last thirty years? Who do not have a paved access for fire trucks?
Well, if I remember correctly, Mr. Harper asked for a waiver not to pave it when he split it, and he was granted that waiver for it not to be paved.
Okay.
That's how that happened several many years ago.
Right, it did.
Yeah. But if you want to pave it, I'm sure nobody would complain, and I'm sure the fire department would love to have it paved, but we're not here to require you to have to pave yours either.
Ms. Christie, we're, uh, well aware of all, this is not our first rodeo. The land that we're talking about, I have five acres on the north border that you see in the flat up there. That's my five acres, that's my house sitting in the middle of it, and I have a private easement to come up off Forty-eighth Street to the first right turn, and that goes down in the woods to my house. Okay, but Mr. Harper sold that property to me, Mr. Mike Overton was the realtor that sold it, he told me then, but you just said, that Mr. Harper had waived that, or got the council to waive paving it, but that land is not owned by us, it's owned by, what's his name, Harper, uh...
Mr. Harper passed away a number of years ago, it is now owned by the estate, Rudy Harper and his siblings owned...
Right.
Own all of it, that has not been subdivided. There's approximately seven acres up there and an acre that sits down on Forty-eighth Street that they own.
Okay, anyway, we have, we have a private drive, and it's marked at the bottom of the hill at Forty-eighth Street, where the little house sits at the bottom of the hill.
Right, that's correct.
It says private drive, invited guest only, so we don't have any traffic up there now. Uh, and, um, Donna owns the driveway on the south end. Now, she owns the property at the south end of your border there, and her house sits at the top of the hill. And she has a private drive up to the top of the hill to her house, so there is no access. Now, the big problem we have, Patsy, is in all these years when we've asked, and the chief, or assistant chief, I guess it was, and that wasn't the other guy out in the hall, and he apprised us, that they were going to take a look at getting us a fire hydrant and a water line. If it's a requirement for the city, we're still sitting up there paying a huge amount of taxes, and we don't even have a fire hydrant, we don't have a city water line.
But that's an issue that needs to be addressed with your property. That's really not an issue to allow them to have a, a tandem lot split if all their access is from the south.
Okay, are you gonna bring water up there and give it to him?
He will have to bring, we're not bringing water to it, he will have to provide it.
Yeah, but he said it has to meet code.
Right?
Okay, well then, you tell us what we have to do to get a fire hydrant up there with all these houses. We're more than a thousand feet away from the fire hydrant.
Okay.
It's down on Forty-eighth.
So, the, the, I, I don't want to get too deep in, in all of these things on here, I mean, because the, what this is right here is just about the tandem lot split.
But he said he's plans on subdividing this.
He's dividing it into two lots.
There's three.
His property will be divided to two lots. That existing tract there will be two lots, one that he intends to keep on the south and one that he intends to, to, to sell off on the north. Only two lots, with an access that has to be extended from the lot on the south just to the edge of the lot on the north. He's not proposing to build anything on the north at this time.
This is our first time to meet our new neighbor. So, we're having to ask him questions, what are you gonna do? So, we were unaware that there was even an idea to plot this to where they could sell more property than somebody else, because that would give me a new neighbor, because he just told me...
Mary Ellen was going to do the same thing, and that's the discussion we had, and then she decided to sell the whole tract, and they've come back to do a lot split. So, that's, that's the situation we're in. But they're, they're dividing this one tract into two tracts with one access off of Forty-eighth Street, and right now, the requirement is they would have to pave it from Forty-eighth Street all the way up to where it gets to that second house, at today's requirement. They didn't ask for a waiver, as Mr. Harper did.
A question, though, this may not be the proper time to ask it, but that ugly scar to the south of us, what's the city planning to do with that?
Mining operations are, as we've talked about in the past, are controlled by the state, not by the city. And we have sent letters to the state asking them to take care of it. I haven't heard back from him in quite some time, and the mayor's shaking his head that he hasn't heard back from him many times, yeah.
Over two years ago, the city inspector came out with me, walked over, and I showed him what we were intending with.
Yes, yes.
The last dirt that was mined out of that pit was when they built the street, Fifty-sixth Street beside the pilot station on the other side of the interstate.
And I'm not gonna argue with it, yes, that's what happened, we have been trying to go through the proper channels to get it done.
And again, I don't, I don't, this, this right here, again, this isn't about that lot, and that whole piece. We just need to make sure the conversation...
Well, it is in a way, because have you been, have you... Oh, yeah, I do.
The, what's on the agenda for this evening is a specific lot as far as for a tandem lot split here. I just want to make sure we guide the conversation appropriately to that. I mean, if there's concerns about the other property, that's fine, I mean, there's other, there's other, there's other venues to be able to, to address those things, but it is not something as far as for us here on the commission here tonight.
Well, I also own the house at the very bottom of the hill on Harper Lane that fronts on that ugly piece of mine behind us.
So, the only thing that's, has been brought up from the planning department as far as that they need to make sure that they comply with because they did not ask for a waiver, is the paving requirements in that whole piece.
So, at this point in time, the city has no objection to his plans to possibly subdivide the other thirty acres? I don't know how much he is planning on keeping for a personal residence?
Yeah, I need you to come to the mic if you're, if you're talking on this, and I, again, I just want to stay focused on this particular property.
Yeah, so it's about sixteen, give or take, so we'd keep six or seven or whatever, and sell the rest to someone else that wants to build a house up there.
The total tract that you have is how many acres?
Sixteen something, almost sixteen, fifteen something.
You keep creating two tracts on sixteen acres?
Right.
That's all they're gonna do?
Right.
Right. They're not subdividing anything else.
And, and he'll have to pave access to that location.
Okay, back to the water, back to the water.
There's nothing on the water that I can address on that.
He just said that that was city code.
Okay, we will have to address that with the gentleman who's doing the conditional use for the tandem lot, because he has to provide utilities. He's not asking for a waiver of any of that. He is required to take it to his two lots. That's all he has to do right now. The water issue on your piece of property, we just need to get with Springdale Water and see what it takes to take care of that situation. We can't answer that question here tonight, because that's a water department issue that will have to meet the code.
Okay, what department do we go to to try to get something?
You need to go to Springdale Water Utilities, talk to them about if you're looking to get a fire hydrant or increase water capacity up to the top of the hill, you need to go address that issue with them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Donna?
Hi. My name is Donna Johnson. I, um, my drive is the one you can see that goes up to their corner, so my house is there on the right. He's really answered my question. I wanted to know if they just had the one easement that was running alongside mine up to their place. If they have their home and stuff on that first part of the property and then sell the eight, seven or eight acres or whatever's left. Since my property does not touch that property north, will I get a notice if it's sold and then those people decide to subdivide it and make it a subdivision? The only reason I'm concerned about that is because...
Right now, the ordinance only requires that they notify the adjacent property owner. So if you're not an adjacent property owner, you won't get a notice as of today. They would have to rezone it in order to lay it out, in order to get access to it, so...
Because my entire side of my property, the cars are going to be going, to get to that property, it's going to be, they're all going to be going right past the end of my property, and for me, it's going to be a tremendous effect.
Okay, right now, it's Kevin, can you discuss the internet thing where she can go on?
Yeah, I was getting ready. I mean, you also, as far as notifications, you can go on to the city website, and you can subscribe as far as to be notified online for virtually any properties within the city.
Okay.
We always make sure that we encourage people to, to do those signups on that. But as far as what Patty was saying, as far as when we put a sign out there in any notifications, that is just for the adjacent properties that, that touch, that the one in question in that whole piece.
But if there was a hearing like today, I could come and speak if I wanted to.
Oh, yeah. The hearings are always open to the public, anyone who wants to speak about any of the issues.
I appreciate it.
Is this rezoned at this time?
A1.
A1.
Two acre minimum, so they would have to rezone it if they were putting anything in, anything less than two acres.
Okay. You all have questions or comments as well? If you can state your name and address, please.
My name is Eddie Maples, and my address is 4248 Terrace Street, and that is in the South Wind Terrace subdivision, which is just to the east of, of the property that you're proposing there. And my question about the paving of this road, does that, does that mean that they have to put a paved road the end from somewhere to that property? And, and you said it was from the south? I'm not sure I understood it.
Erin, can you show where the pavement were required? He'll, he'll put, put an arrow on that so that we can, you can see where it's supposed to be. I mean, they'll, they'll only have to pave it on that side. There won't be any roads that extends to your side of the, of the property with, with the conditional use for the tandem lot split. It's only on the west side of the hill.
Because they're planning on splitting it right in the middle, right there. So one lot on, one lot to the south, one lot to the north, and they just have to pave it up to that next, the north section. But they're going to split it right somewhat in half, but it'll go...
It's not exactly in half, but it's a, it's two tracts that will run.
It'll be a horizontal split.
But, but they have to pave all the way to the paved road, right?
So the only part that he's going to...
Or only...
We're talking about them having to pave it all the way from 48th Street because it's not access that's accessible for the fire department right now.
So it's going to come all the way down past all the other houses on that...
But not on your, not on the South Wind Terrace side, not on that side.
No, not on the South Wind side, and it will be in the access easement that's already been granted from 48th Street up to that first lot, so.
Okay, but the, the two parcels will be right at the top of that south, right at the top of that paved area, because, I mean, and, and so that will go over to South Wind Terrace subdivision, the one parcel that he's wanting to build his property, his home on. That will not be subdivided to add any additional homes or anything at all.
Right now, he's being asked to create two lots, and that's all.
Your question is, in the future, could he come back and request?
Normally, we don't approve double and triple and four or five tandem lots. If that was going to happen and they were going to subdivide it where they put more houses on it, there would have to be a public street that's built through there and get access to it.
With sidewalks and, and appropriate...
Appropriate locations that built to the city sewer.
City sewer and everything.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
No, not at this time.
Any other questions or comments in the audience? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Powell.
Okay, so that means if, if we approve this, they have to pave...
Or they can get the lot split approved to be filed, the paving has to be done, or we have to have a bond for it. Or they will have to come back and ask for a waiver, because we want to prove it until that happens.
And the paving is all the way to 48th Street?
That's what we've discussed tonight, because the fire department does not have access to it.
I just want to make it very clear, okay?
What, and Patty, I think it's actually a variance from the tandem lot requirements is what it would be, I think.
Yes, that's true. I'm sorry, not a waiver, it's a variance, I'm sorry. Terminologies, we have to make sure we get the terminology correct. It would be a variance that would have to come in. And I can tell you by the look on Duane's face, he's not going to support a variance for it not to be paved.
Well, and he probably has, I mean, depending on the length of this, it comes other additional requirements.
I can't give a variance on state law.
Yeah. So, Duane, I mean, you had mentioned as far as the length of that could potentially require turnaround requirements as well.
If you have a, a single drive, if you have more than, let's just be simple, two residential's on it, basically you have to, once you build the third one, you would have to bring, on my end, a road up to at least the first one where there's not more than two on the dirt. And then every time you built a house, you'd have to bring up the road to that 20-foot wide...
And then it would have to have a hammerhead to turn around or something.
A hammerhead, a modified...
So 4305 would be one, and then this would be a second one, and this...
The one that he's going to build would be a second one, and if they added a third one...
If they add a third or a utility building, a large utility building, you know, that's...
Then it would require turnaround requirements on that.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody's clear as far as what's going on.
And once you're over 150 feet, you require a turnaround. Once you're over 750 feet, you require 26 feet width of road.
Okay.
We are not sharing...
Can you speak in the mic, I'm sorry?
We are not sharing an easement, so does that make a difference?
Well, he'll have to pave the easement that he has in existence from 48th Street to that, that entire tract, because there's an easement just for that.
Right, so if it was him, and then the next lot that he's going to split off, that would be the second one, I shouldn't be in that count, because I have my own driveway up.
Okay, so we would actually have two access points there at one time?
Yeah.
Okay. We need to check the legals on those easements to make sure we have that down.
You have your own driveway from 48th?
Yes, the one that's there now.
It's there right now, it's been there for years. And actually, I have my plat, and it's got the easement numbers and the stuff on it, so there's two.
You have a, Erin, do you know if we have a copy of that? If we don't, we may just need to scan it in so that we make sure we have one, or we can pull it up from the county records, either way.
Yeah, I think that's what we did when we were meeting with the applicants, is they had a copy of a future one or a current one, and then we looked up the rest through deeds and stuff, so...
Okay, so we should have that information on the file, too. We'll go back and look at it again and make sure that we don't have a problem with those access easements.
Good.
I do have one other question and comment. Do we know where a home would be placed on this property? Is it, they're asking for a single, or is that something they have to say?
They don't have to tell us that today. They can put it any place that they can, on that side itself.
Okay, and I guess he's well aware of the water issues that come through there? And it, I'll talk...
Talked about it, has drainage issues, yes, we know.
Okay.
I'll, I'll talk to you.
All right. We have a call for the vote by Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Lot split passes 6-0.
Staff will prepare the resolution. It goes to council next Tuesday evening.
Thank you. Next section, preliminary plats, replats, and final plats. We have a preliminary plat 17-02 Parkway Plaza subdivision, south of Don Tyson Parkway, east of 56th Street, and west of I-49 presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. We brought this forward about a year ago. It was a full preliminary plat. Currently, we just want to improve the east half or phase one of that development at this time, so we're bringing it back to show those improvements and ask for your approval.
Staff comments?
Street names will need to be provided and approved prior for, to final plat acceptance. All comments from utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans. No comments for the preliminary plat. Comments dated 11/9/217 are to be preserved for the submission of the construction drawings for this, by this developer. You problems, you know what all that stuff is.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Preliminary plat passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Next item, final plat 17-03 Legendary Subdivision Phase 2D Northwest Corner of Kerry Smith and Miller Roads, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. This is a final plat of the last phase of Phase 2 Legendary. There's approximately 30, there's 34 lots on this, in this phase, asking for your approval.
Staff comments?
Are the street improvements on?
What, I'm sorry?
Are all the street improvements and the water...
Yes, we, we've actually had a final, final section with city staff with some minor comments to address. All paving's done. We're close.
Show the instrument numbers for offsite easements. All comments from utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval. All terms of the attached list shall be satisfied prior to obtaining the planning director's signature on the final plat. You know, that standard list of bonding and all that kind of stuff. Comply with the final plat requirement checklist. You need to add the note for roof and landscaping drains, drains and pipes of any size or type, which carry water from any structure must be directed to public rights of way or drainage easements or to public drainage systems that may be directed to a neighboring, and may not be directed to a neighboring property.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Final plat passes 6-0.
If you want this to go to council next week, we need the ordinance very quickly.
Okay, tomorrow.
Put the packet together by Thursday at noon, so you need to submit to office tomorrow if you can.
Okay, no problem.
Next section, large-scale developments, L-17-30 El Centro Cristiano Espino, 1751 North 56th Street, concept of detention. Also, variance, B-17-65 variance for modification of commercial design standards, variance for modification of fencing requirement presented by James Layout Services.
Hi, I am Kelly Hamblin, and I have been...
Kelly, you're going to have to speak a little louder.
Sorry. Okay, is that better?
Better.
Okay, I have been speaking with the adjacent property owners to the north and to the south of this property about the screening variance, and I have been told that they do not want a fence up, that they like a natural barrier between. And the, the gentleman on the south requested a, a natural hedge, an evergreen hedge, and Mrs. Allison to the north requested perhaps some ornamental trees or bushes. And she was, she wants the spacing in between the plants for airflow. And as far as screening on the east side, the drainage of this property, it flows naturally from west to east, and if we put a fence on that east side, it is going to obstruct the drainage and cause some really bad problems for this property. So we're requesting the, the variance for screening, as I just described, which is a little bit different than what was actually submitted on the application. But we do have both of those property owners that this would affect here. So, is there any other questions for me?
Staff comments?
I need state plan coordinates for all fire hydrant locations. All comments from utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of constructions plans. A screening fence is required in accordance with Chapter 56. Show trees associated with the screen. Need to show spot elevations at the drives to prove that there is a high spot so that water does not drain to the street. Provide a stormwater pollution prevention plan. The concept of detention must be approved by a planning commission. An easement shall be provided in plans for detention facilities. A minimum 25-foot wide drainage easement shall be provided around the 100-year flood pool connecting the tributary pipes and the discharge system along the most passable routing of piping systems. Ownership of the detention facility will remain with the land. A copy of the filed easement will need to be sent to us before approval. The other items that, one of the ones that you got sent to have all been addressed, so...
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience?
In your request for the variance for modification of the commercial design standards, you're asking for it to be as submitted in the plan documents itself?
Yes, ma'am. The only thing that I think somehow got lost in, in the transition of files here is there was the intention of putting a two-foot landscape strip along the sides of the buildings on the, on both the north and south side, and the landscaping is shown there in the elevations, but it, it did get missed on the plans, and we will add that in.
Okay. And then the height of the canopy, the fire department would address that, and we're okay with that for trucks and with to go through?
Duane's outside.
Erin, are you, I know we had that concern before, I assume all that got addressed?
I believe that the architect has addressed everything, and I thought he was here.
Yes.
Busy night for you, Duane.
The canopy, I know there was a question with the height and the width. I'm assuming that we've got that taken care of?
13 foot, 6 inches, 20-foot wide clear path. They're going to use that as a turnaround.
So Kelly, you get...
It's 14, 14.5, I think.
I think so.
I think the height was the issue as much as the width.
14.7, I think.
14.7? I couldn't remember, sorry.
Then how wide is it? The drive-through?
It, it's a...
You can come up to the mic.
Yes. It is, I believe, 28 feet right there.
That should be fine.
Yeah, I gave her, when we talked, we gave her the option, she could either make hammerhead turnarounds and make them work, or she can make a drive-through as long as she met the code.
Okay.
I'm sorry, let me correct that. It's 26 feet wide with 28-foot radii.
Yeah, it's clear, as long as it's 20-foot clear.
Okay.
Thanks, Duane. Did you have anything else?
I know, I'm sorry. That I have, that's all my comments, sorry.
All right, I thought you were done.
No, I'm done.
All right, so we have some comments?
Yes.
You can state your name and address, please, for the...
I'm Alan Bearden. This is my wife, Martha. We live, we have the...
I'm Alan Bearden, this is my wife Martha, we live, we have the...
You pull the mic up just a little bit.
Sorry about that. We have the property to the south, the ten acres, and this kinda snuck up on us, so we're a little unprepared, but the house we're in is just right south of where the new proposed building is gonna be, so we'll literally be looking out the kitchen window at that new building. So, the concerns we had were, we're not sure how high the building, the building is gonna be, how many stories it's gonna be, and, and we were talking to Kelly earlier, she said about the, the barrier between them and our property, and I guess it's kinda hard to understand what would be a reasonable barrier if you don't know how high the buildings are gonna be. So, really, that's, that's the two concerns we have, is just understanding how high the buildings are gonna be and, and what kind of privacy barrier there would be.
Kelly, the, the building is a single-story? Kelly, it's a single-story building, and how tall is the peak on the, you need to...
Two-story.
Oh, it's two-story, okay.
Yes, it is.
So, is that the same as the church? Is it two? Or is it three?
I'm certain that it isn't three, but I'm not sure that it isn't, if it's two.
And the requirement for screening between properties is an eight-foot fence?
So, there, there's no distinction between residential and commercial barriers?
Well, this is not a commercial, this is a P-one zone, which is an institutional for a church.
Okay.
And it's set back, what's the distance from the side property lines to the edge of the building? Kelly, do you know?
Well, we've got two nineteen-foot parking spaces and a twenty-six-foot, I, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Sixty-six at least there, more or less, and then whatever the space is, it's ten-foot between that, the edge of the parking lot and the...
It's, it's over ten feet between the edge of the parking lot and the property line there. Well, it's ten feet on one side and twelve feet on the other.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments?
Hi, I'm Brenda Allison, and I live on the north side at eighteen twenty-three North Fifty-Sixth Street, and I, about the fencing, I just want to have it more natural, I don't want it to be an industrial-looking fence, and I like to have the airflow, I like it to look natural, it's in the country, and so if we can keep it that way, I'd much rather have it that, so.
Kelly, we would need you to submit a revised screening if you're going to propose to use an alternate besides what you show on the, on the plan now.
Okay.
If you want to meet with them and see if you can work something out, we would need you to...
Is that something that we can vote on tonight, or...
We have to decide if we're willing to do that first, and then if we can, we'll work that.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Okay, it's to the commission?
So, we can, we don't want a fence on the north side, but we want a fence on the south side?
You, you don't want a fence, correct?
We actually have a fence on the south side.
Yeah, if you can come to the mic and, and talk.
We currently have a fence on the south side.
On your property?
Mm-hmm, yeah, between the two properties. But it's not really a privacy fence, it's just, one is a chain-link fence for part of the, part of the length, and then there's a barbed wire fence because we have some cattle there.
But on, on, okay.
Would you prefer to have a natural barrier added with what the fencing is there with some kind of a hedge? That's what Kelly indicated.
Yes, yes.
So, the, the south side would have a hedge or something on there, and then the north side we're proposing that would have some kind of ornamental trees or something that would create more of an open space between those, and if that's acceptable to the, to the planning commission, then Kelly would have to come in with a revised plan to show how that's gonna work.
And, and ornamental broken screen, I kinda thought might be a, a good way to visualize it.
And those ornamental trees, are you looking for more evergreen, or are you looking for...
Mrs. Allison indicated more of an interest in, like, maybe flowering trees. She had mentioned a crimson king or dogwood, or even some, some flowering shrubs. Those were some of the things that she mentioned.
Okay.
I have a question. Would, would you set the height limit to a natural burial? Is it the same as, as a fence?
I think the canopy is at twenty feet?
Twenty feet?
I don't know, I have to look, I'm, I'm looking at Erin back there to, to see if that's the case, because when I quote things out of the top of my head, sometimes that's good or not. The...
Canopy height, for a natural?
Canopy height?
For a natural, mm-hmm.
I mean, we, for perimeter landscaping, we can do anything for berming or just, I mean, if you have large trees there that are hardwoods, they're gonna grow to, you know, respectful height if it's good soil, and you're not gonna have as much of a screening, but...
But would those, would those be, come into a, they could only go to a maximum height? I think is what your question is on that.
Well, right, right now, between the two properties, there is the power lines that go across, and so it can only reach a certain height.
Right.
So, but even if you put some type of tree in that does not reach that high with, with a barrier where you don't see the parking lots would be great, 'cause we're gonna be looking out the window at, at the building, so it would be nice to have some height there, like a tree, but it didn't have to be a straight, very, really high one.
So, it may be best for Kelly to work with them separately, to look at where they wanna place that screening along the side of the property, that gives them the, the, the most adequate screening at the point they're looking for it at, and then bring that back.
That's, that's correct, that'd probably be best because there is an easement, I think, that runs there, is that right, Kelly? And so it would, the utilities company is probably gonna have a problem if we stuck something in proximity to that without working on it.
Um, the, yes, there is utilities, that was actually why I kinda shied away from the berming, was because I didn't wanna have to raise any of the manholes or anything like that.
Right.
Trees, I, I know that the utility companies are not, they never really like trees, but nonetheless, we have to plant them in utility easements all the time, and I was under the, I, I was, the, the tree that I actually had discussed with Mr. Pruden was an arb- arborative, I'm not sure if I'm saying that correctly, but if I recall right, it does not get incredibly high, but averages maybe about ten, twelve feet.
I think the, the most important thing is, is that we understood as far as, you're, you're wanting some screening that covers as far as, so that you're not looking at the parking lot all the time. As far as what's, what that is, to get to that type of requirements, I think what you're hearing from here is that it's acceptable to work that out.
For an opaque natural screen?
Right.
Okay, so an opaque natural screen along the south side and a broken ornamental screen on the north side?
That's, that's what's being proposed on that.
Taking into account their viewpoint from where they're looking out there.
Yes, sir, okay.
Okay. Brian, did you have a...
Oh, and, and no screening on the part where it would impede the drainage, right?
Right.
Okay.
And so that's what you're modifying your fencing variance to include?
Yes, ma'am.
It is twenty feet, by the way, I did find it.
I, I was thinking that it was, but it's been a while since I've looked that up.
Always better to check than to assume.
All right, any other questions or comments from the commission?
So, and, and the commercial design standard change is what?
Okay, she's asking for it to be approved as was submitted in your packet. But it looks, and it's very similar to the existing building, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what it's gonna look like, and it's pretty similar to what's already there.
Okay. So, we have a couple of call for the votes, we've got the variances. A call for the votes, and then we have concept of detention, a call for the vote.
Can we do them together?
Do the variances together on that one, okay? So, we have a call for vote by Mr. Covert?
Yes, sir.
On both variances together?
On the vari, both variances together, yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Variance has passed six zero, and then need a call for vote for concept of detention?
Call for vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Powell?
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Concept of detention passes six zero, and then...
I'm supposed to approve large-scale sub-staff comment.
Motion by Mr. Powell?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Haney?
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Large-scale passes six zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next item, large-scale seventeen dash thirty-four, Sam's Furniture Two, Hidden Creek Lane, Lot One of Business Park and Brush, or at Brush Creek, parcel eight fifteen, twenty-nine oh, twenty-nine eight oh one dash three seventy-five, concept of detention presented by Crafton Toll.
How are y'all? My name's Joe Pfeifer, I'm with Crafton Toll, I'm here on behalf of Mathias Properties to represent this Sam's Furniture large-scale project. It's basically a fifty thousand square foot, it'll be twenty thousand retail, thirty thousand storage, best sister store to the existing Sam's Furniture store that's out there right now. There's, we submitted a, a few architectural variances with the project upon resubmital, and we've got our architect here with us if, if you guys wanna discuss any of those.
Staff comments?
Those variances requests didn't get filed in time to do the publication notice, so we can't really hear the variances tonight.
Okay.
Okay. A screening fence is required in accordance with Chapter Fifty-Six. Show trees associated with the screen. All comments from utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to your approval. Construction plans, the development must comply with the city's spring no commercial design standards or variances required. Frontside and rear elevation sliding plan, a written response to design standard comments are required. In all residential commercial and industrial developments submitted after August of twenty, two thousand and seven, all utility lines, cables, et cetera, must be placed underground. The internal passage walkways must be distinguishable from driving surfaces through the use of low-maintenance surface materials such as pavers, bricks, or score concrete, and I believe you show those as painted. Provide at least two of the items listed under the central feature in, in community spaces in the spring no commercial design standards, did you propose any?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, repeat that, please.
Any central features or community spaces, were any of those proposed?
Uh, Nick? Yeah, all that'll be addressed in the building design.
Okay, provide an area to accommodate a possible future public transit stop. The slides and all the things that you provided, that your variance covers are, once that, and I can read through all those, we'll go back to those in a minute. Need a detailed drawings of the enclosures and screening methods. Trash containers, trash compactors, and recycling bins shall be screened from public view on all four sides with a solid fence wall or grass, constructive cedar, redwood, masonry, or other compatible building materials, and shall be appropriately landscaped. How do you propose to enclose the trash?
Again, all that'll be addressed in the building design.
Okay, exterior ground-mounted or building-mounted equipment, including but not limited to mechanical equipment, utilities and banks of meter shall be screened from public view. We got several things that you're still gonna address, is what it sounds like. Commercial, a commercial development includes a fence or wall, the following guidelines and standards apply, maximum height of eight feet, constructive high-quality materials, maximum length of continuous unbroken is fifty feet. Sign design materials and, and placement should be complement the overall architectural design of the building. Are you proposing an additional sign, or it will be on the same one that's already there?
It'll be an additional sign.
Okay, and you'll send that with the other stuff?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, yeah.
Chapter one oh seven, stormwater discharges, the site disturbance is greater than a half-acre grading permit application and SWIP, delaying all anticipated disturbed areas, a plan of these areas to achieve final stabilization. All of that has to be submitted with current BMPs. The, the concept of detention, I don't think is needed on this one because you're draining this to the existing detention pond that was designed as part of the subdivision, so we don't need to do a separate concept of detention. My concern is we have a lot of issues that were not addressed with the plan that we have or with the variants, and so we're kind of looking to approve something that may not have everything addressed. Isn't that a lighting plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we got, we got a lighting plan.
We got the photometric in this week.
Okay, we got that.
Okay, anything else? Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
You know, there's, there's an awful lot of things that are gonna require variances. If, if you're wanting to continue here this tonight and not table it, put it together with the whole plan, one of the things I'd like to see addressed is, some of these variances are, look to me that they're outside of what the norm is, and, and what I look for is, how are you trying, you know, a variance to me is, you're trying to do something different, but still comply in some way with our ordinance. So, if it's landscaping variance, you're, you're gonna put the same amount of trees, but maybe in a different spot, and the same thing with your siding and with your building.
Ben could, oh, Nick could probably elaborate a little more, but most of our variances were to get the, the building to be basically like the, the existing Sam's Furniture. The facades are gonna match materials.
I'm Nick Pierce with Nielsen Architecture, and that was really the gist of our variance was going to be, we're trying to match kind of the development that was already there. It is part of the larger Sam's Club development, or the Sam's Furniture development. So, we were gonna stray too far from what was already done, I know they had applied for some variances that we aren't typically familiar with, it wasn't us who did the first building. So, we were, try to make it match as closely as possible, make it a little bit more traditional. I think the owner wasn't quite as happy with the original building, so we wanted to make a few changes to it, but still make it a affordable structure for something this size.
Okay, and, and, yeah, I mean, cost isn't so much the issue from our standpoint as that it's following the intent of the, and I think we made some changes on the other one that I wouldn't necessarily guarantee you that I will do on this one. So, I'm just telling you to keep that in mind when you bring the others forward.
And if there's...
If you decide, you know, go to...
If you would be willing to work with us, we can probably try to resolve some of that stuff before coming into the next meeting.
Well, what you need to do is submit elevations with the predominant materials and what you're gonna use, so we know what's going to, whatever changes you're using, whatever kind of materials they are, we don't have any of that kind of stuff.
There's an awful lot of metal, not very much.
That we're looking at tonight at Alkeem and Lake.
These elevations.
And are these, are the directions on these elevations right? As far as, that bottom one says the west, on what I'm looking at says west elevation.
It looks like those are flipped, that should be east. Yeah.
'Cause it should face east.
Correct. Main entrance will be east.
I don't know if this was just put together rapidly, just, you know, just given the piece, I don't know. But I would tell you, just from my own, and I can only speak for myself, but I, I would like to see a lot more detail on what we're, what we're being asked to vote on, other than it'll be addressed in the final product, because that, if that's the case, then we're just gonna approve something that we have no idea what's gonna be put forward.
Ideally, these elevations that are submitted, I don't know how long you guys have had to look at these, but this would be the intent of our design.
But it's beyond just the elevations, I mean, we, we can't even hear as far as all the different variances that you have as far as to, and you will have a variances for as design standards, and we will need to understand those, so, I mean, what you're hearing from the group here is it's a bit difficult for us to be able to approve a large-scale, and then have that go beyond us, and, and then be reviewed by the city council. And I suspect, well, you have your, okay.
Then go to council. It, it would be staff review, and we would have to bring it to you if there's something we weren't comfortable with.
So...
You do run the...
My, my question to you guys is, is what's, what's the benefit as far as pushing this through right now versus tabling this, and then coming back as far as the whole piece, including the variances?
If I can just address that, I'm Tom Hanley with Crafton Toll. I, I don't even know whether there's an opportunity to do this, but we'd like to at least ask whether there's a possibility of approving the large-scale this evening, subject to any variances that may or may not be approved. Obviously, as the variances aren't approved, the building will be redesigned so that it's brought into compliance with the code, but that would allow us to move forward with the site work, with the utility plan approval, and that sort of thing. The, the variances that are being requested are not gonna significantly affect or affect at all the footprint of the building, or the parking, or anything site-related.
But if we hear this tonight versus next month, what's, what is gonna slow down the process as far as all the additional that you're working on, I guess that's my question.
Other than it being a month's worth of design that we could, that we could get done and get approved and begin site construction, there's a tremendous amount of earthwork that needs to be done. It would, it would allow them to get, to get the ball rolling, and, and then be able to, it, it's not gonna affect any of the building, because there's so much site work and utility work that needs to be done, and bringing the water line in from Forty-Eighth Street.
We do respect that, we're not trying to hold that up at all. The opportunity is, in the month it took to prepare this, it's prepared with inadequate instruction, it's prepared with the variance information not being available for us to make a decision on, and yet we're supposed to send that forward to our council, who is then going to turn around and say, the planning commission approved this based on what?
Technically, it doesn't go to council. This, once you make the decision tonight, they have to have all of their pieces together before they can get a grading permit. Normally, when we approve a large-scale development plan, that means it's ready to go with elevations and everything else.
Right.
And basically, what you're asking for us is to approve a phased development plan so that you can get a grading permit, is what you're asking for.
And, and, and one of the pieces that was a, a big challenge on the, on the, on the previous property was the fire access, and there was a lot of changes as far as on the outside perimeter of the building, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, we've got, we've got complete fire access all the way around this building.
Okay, but it was, I think we had to go through a couple of rounds of that, if I remember correctly.
And I think we have that all addressed this time. Is Duane still back there? I mean, there's not any issues as far as the building site itself and the access for fire codes, is there?
No, except for when we started this, it was gonna be a city street, and then it become a private road. The road is not fire-laned like it should be, and I think it's less than thirty-two feet all the way to Forty-Eighth Street. Now, as far as this particular building itself, everybody involved, we consulted with each other prior to submitting plans, there's a few things about hydrant locations and things like that, and, and water supply. The original Sam's Club eats up with its pump and its sprinkler system, there's only thirteen... thirteen gallons per minute extra water remaining.
Sam's Furniture, though, you mean, not Sam's Club, this is Sam's Furniture?
Sam's Furniture, the original Sam's Furniture building. But they've come up with a plan to loop the system, so we're even gonna have water that may decline in years to come, we'll have it for the new Sam's Club, or the, sorry, the original Sam's Furniture store over there.
So, in essence, you're saying they've addressed all those issues as far as fire access and fire flow.
Floes, even for the existing building, I think it's gonna help, because they're, they're planning on looping the system now, which will, will take care of if the water declines any for the Sam's Furniture building, there, it's there now.
I mean, the planning commission's decision, are you comfortable with moving this forward, so that we can attempt to get it ready to get a permit, a grading permit, without knowing exactly what the building itself is gonna look like? All those details aren't worked out, that's the question you all have to address.
So, they'll have to come back?
Yes, they have to come back to get any variances, or their plan has to be designed to meet all of the design standards, as they are today.
Me personally, I'm, I'm okay with.
That's fine. I just wanted to make a clarification, one of the engineers, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit under the weather, had mentioned approvals, subject to any variances that are not, you know, that have not come before the body, that's not what they can approve. They can approve subject to staff comments, with the assumption that everything is going to be as presented, and any variance is a later issue. Does that make sense?
It's technically, you can't get approved set of plans unless all that has been addressed. So, if we approve it tonight, you still gotta come back next time if you wanna change it.
I was gonna say that I, personally, I'm okay with moving it forward, as, because it sounds like they're under the understanding that you potentially could lose a lot more than one month's worth of design work when you bring this back, and it risks not getting approved. And I know that that's the facade and stuff, so that's gonna be not a priority right now, but if you bring it back like that, it's gonna risk not getting approved, and then you've gotta wait another month before we see it again. So, I mean, as long as there, as long as everybody understands, I'm, I'm fine with moving it forward.
And we're not, we're not trying to make y'all's decision difficult.
No, I understand, but in the past, when there's that many issues, there have been several instances where we have just tabled it, because there's not enough information for us to make those decisions.
Sure, and, and I completely understand that. Though, I, I guess our, our request really is centered around the fact that there's thirteen-hundred feet of water line that we're gonna have to design and bring in to get the fire flow up to what it needs to be, cause currently, it's at a marginal level. And with that kind of capital investment by Mathias Properties into that, they're, they're obviously gonna, to bring the building into compliance if, if variances aren't, aren't approved. But I completely understand your position as well, so.
Right, cause.
So, the question is, do you want the large scale to be voted on tonight, or do you wanna request it to be tabled? Because if it's voted on tonight, you have to meet all of the, the commercial design standards to get approved large scale. Sarah said, it's either we approve it, subject to staff comments, which means those things have to be addressed, or you have to wait until you get a variance before we get approved it. So, basically, it's whichever you wanna do.
Well, the footprint's not gonna change. Footprints, the footprint. I said, the footprint's not gonna change. So, utilities, size of the bit, foot, foundation of the building, parking lot, parking, that's not changing. The variances are everything above ground.
Well, and just for the, I don't know if the commission's fully aware, but in the review process, once the planning commission approves this, it's still subject to staff review until all comments are addressed for the city. So, you will not be able to pull a permit, even if you had large-scale approval, until we got to a point where everything we felt from the city staff and our ordinance was met, unless there was a variance deviating from that.
That was my comment. You can't get approved large scale unless you bring us a set of plans that meets all the design standards between now and next month. Okay?
Sure, and that's, that's fine. We're, we're fairly confident that the client's gonna wanna probably pursue the variances. And, and so, that would probably be the best course, is for us, just to bring this whole thing back through, rather than to put you guys in a position where you're trying to approve a partial plan.
So, are you requesting this be tabled till next month?
I guess that's what I'm saying, Patsy, yeah.
All right, thank you all. All right, so next to large scale, seventeen dash thirty-five, Artisan Flooring, one thirty-seven East County Road, Line Roads, Concept of Detention presented by Steadfast Engineering.
Good evening, my name is Randy Ritchie, I'm with Steadfast.
And you wanna tell us a little bit more about your, your property here?
Oh, I can do that. The property is five acres, pretty much on the nose, and the developer is intending to build four buildings. The four buildings will be built phased, not all at one time. They wanna begin the first building, the furthest west building, they wanna begin immediately, and that will become their Artisan Floors Carpet Warehouse, which, that is a company that is in business in Springdale now. They happen to be leasing a building on, just off of North Thompson, and they wanna move to this facility, is, would be larger, and would better facilitate their operations. The other buildings would be built out as they find tenants to occupy them. So, they won't be doing all four buildings at once, they'll be doing the first one immediately, and the second one, well, the rest of them hopefully soon after, but as the, as the tenant availability comes. We are extending this private road, it's not a, it's currently a private street. We're gonna extend it, we got the fire truck turnaround at the end, the cul-de-sac at the end, and we're also providing a permanently striped fire hammerhead in the middle of that, because of the length between those. We have the detention, you guys will be voting on the concept of detention. We have landscape plan, I think we need a little bit more work on the landscape plan per the comments that I saw today. But otherwise, fairly straightforward project, all the utilities are available. There you have it.
Staff comments?
Did you provide a written response to all the comments?
If I didn't, that was a mistake on my part, cause I made them.
Still a comment, we don't have your written responses.
Okay.
State plan coordinates, for all fire hydrant locations, so location of the handicap parking signs, needs to tell us of the handicap ramps, truncated dumbs are required, as per ADA requirements, the front landscaping is required, perimeter landscaping is required, new landscape plan, automatic irrigation systems shall be required for all landscaped areas, have a two-year guarantee for landscaping, show all existing easements, show the size and location of freestanding signs. All comments from utility companies and other cities departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans. In our residential, commercial, and industrial developments, after August of two thousand and seven, all utility lines, cables must be underground. Sarah comments, a land survey or seal and certificate of authorization must be provided on the plans. Elaborate on M and R with meets and bounds, if M is measure and R is record, please note that. A property line adjustment cannot be included in large-scale property, the property line is a large-scale development, must match the legal description of the warranty date. Have you addressed that?
Yes. Well, a hand, a majority of these actually are on the drawings, I think I just need to meet with staff and we can go through, but none of, we don't have any issue with any of those, any of these comments.
Okay, we need a grading and drainage plan. For showing each lot, how it drains to the street right away, dedicated drainage element with improvements on existing drainage way with, without flowing across a neighboring lot, no drains from roof drains, landscaping runoff may be directed or diverted onto neighboring properties. Label the materials for the proposed parking lots and driveways, show a detail of the HCP ramps at, handicap ramps at sidewalks. Need a grading permit, even though the site disturbances, the site disturbance is greater than a half acre, a grading permit and a SWIP is required. Concept of detention must be approved. Neasement shall be provided in plans for detention facilities, a minimum twenty-foot ride drainage shall be provided around the hundred-year flood pool. There's some significant things that may or may not be, have been addressed on this list, too.
Is that it? Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Similar as the other one? Is there too many items?
There's a lot of comments, you know.
And we haven't even gotten an answer on, right?
Any that relate to the, did you say, "Commercial design standards" in there?
I don't think this project, I don't think "commercial design standards" apply to this project.
Is this an industrial area, correct?
It's I want.
Yeah, so it doesn't have "commercial design standards"?
Oh, I've got a list here, sorry.
Any other questions, comments?
Again, you would not get an approved large-scale development plan, that you can get a grading permit till all these things have been addressed.
Now, I would like to say that there is a large list of items here, but I can, I mean, I can come in tomorrow morning and review the plans with Aaron, and a lot of these items, I, I think are on the plans, I think maybe because I didn't, because of the written responses, maybe didn't get picked up.
Usually, we look for a written response that says, "This has been noted on the plan", and you go look at the plan and see that it's been done. And we don't have that, that puts us in a bad position. It's not our job to do quality control for development proposals as a committee.
I mean, my recommendation is this one be tabled as well, till next month, but it's not.
And I apologize, I, I didn't realize that the written responses weren't there. I, I thought they were on the disc, but that would've been my mistake.
So, are you good with tabling this till next month?
Well, I don't know if I have a choice, the, the owner's here.
If you can state your name, please.
I'm Eric Tabor, Memphis, Tennessee. I'm with Artisan Flooring and developer. Our timetable is such that it, it's very tight, and tabling it means thirty days. And as she stated, that this grading permit is contingent on us finishing all this. I'm, I'm very comfortable with, we can't commence until we have a grading permit. And we intend to comply with everything. I see no issues with anything y'all have requested.
To me, I see the difference between this one and the last one was that I knew that the developer was going to want those variances, because of the size of fifty thousand square-foot building, and so, to go from what they presented to comply with commercial design standards is a lot of money. And so, it was not, it was, to me, I didn't feel like it was as tough a position for us as it was gonna be for the architects, if they committed to complying with commercial design standards. So, that's where I see the difference between this one and that one, in that there's some landscaping, but other than that, I mean, it sounds like most of the stuff he could knock out maybe tomorrow, or the day after, working with Aaron or whatever, and, and what the last one presented, they weren't planning on changing any of that. So, they weren't planning on complying with, if that makes sense to anybody, but they weren't planning on getting up to commercial design standards. It sounds like they're committed to getting to this list of fifteen, sixteen things, planning on complying with all that, so that's my two cents.
My only concern is, if they plan to, it should've been addressed by now.
I'm sorry.
If you intended to, it should've been addressed by now.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with Patsy. I, I don't, once again, I don't, I don't want it to be misinterpreted that by tabling these, we're trying to slow down the progress, but we're here once a month to hear and to see the opportunities brought before us, and unfortunately, just cannot make a sound judgment call when the information isn't provided. I certainly understand what Peyton's saying, I think they are two different things. The only thing for my two cents is that I think we need to be consistent, and I don't think we want to change the rules every time for every different one, based on what we believe may or may not be the things that they're trying to achieve. So, just for me, and I'm only speaking for me, if the information is not adequate to make the decision on what we're being asked to review, I don't believe we can make that decision properly.
But we have before proved large scales here, when all of the issues haven't necessarily been addressed, when they've said, "We will", is that correct, or am I misspeaking? We have done that before.
This one is very close to have not made it anyway. If there'd been a couple more comments, they wouldn't have made it anyway.
Right, right.
Yeah, I agree with you, Peyton, I think we have done that in the past, but it may have been for one to maybe three or four things, not the list we're looking at on this. That's, that's just my take.
Yeah, and I would say, several years ago, we probably would've let something like that go, and we started having problems with what happened a month down the road. And because of that, having been on the commission for a long time, we started kind of curtailing and really paying attention to that, just like we're asking for the elevations and things like that.
I think the difference that you're bringing up is, is that we're not anticipating a bunch of variances in this, at all. Is that kind of what you're stating, is that they, they will comply with all of these things in here?
I think that, yeah, what I'm trying to, yeah, what I'm trying to say is, I think they understand what we're, what we're saying right now, is we're approving it to get all this stuff up. And I'm not, yes, they should've had it in, should've all been cleared up and everything, but I think that the last group did not understand that by us approving that and moving it on, it locked them into having to do that, I don't, don't think that was their intention. That's the only thing I'm.
My concern is, we don't want people to get the impression that you can submit a substandard set of plans, and come to the planning commission, and get approval subject to staff comments, and we gotta work it out at the staff level. The project needs to be pretty well put together by the time it gets here. As I said, if this had had a couple more comments, it wouldn't have gone on anyway. They just squeaked into a couple. One being, not providing the written response is always a big concern for me.
You know, I'll have to make an apology that I am out of town and tied up in the holidays, and that's no excuse. I should've been a little more diligent about getting the responses back to y'all. I drove over here to be a part of this, and it won't happen again. We can get you all the responses with no changes within, what's?
I mean, they already exist, I just, I thought.
He already has them, we just have not submitted them in writing, so. If there's any forgiveness for being an out-of-town guy, we wanna do business here, so.
Not out of town, though.
Well, if we do vote on this, and it does not pass.
We'll put it back on the agenda for next time. Hopefully, with all comments have been addressed, except for all comments from utility companies need to be, need to be addressed, and that's what we.
Okay.
And I, one more thing, and I, I agree, I don't want us to, I don't want people to submit sub, and so that you have to sit here and try to rack your brain and us design these things at this meeting, I completely agree with that. Maybe we should standardize a, if there are, once you pass five, or however many, un, it doesn't make it to this meeting at all.
Well, we, we pretty well went with twenty to twenty-five. If you get over that limit, you don't get to see it anyway. And if there are major issues, you don't get to see it anyway. This one's pretty borderline at this, that's the only reason it's still on here.
Right.
So, how long have, have they had to respond with written requests?
Technical plot review was, what date was it, in the?
It was on the sixteenth.
It was on the sixteenth, and they have to resubmit the next week. I mean, that's the way the schedule is. The technical plot review is set on a Thursday, they have to the following Wednesday to respond with all of written responses and all the new information.
So, we got holiday involved in there, so.
Yes, and then we had all last week to sit down and work with.
Had all last week, so.
We have done some, and we spent some time with the one, the church, trying to get everything we're up through today, trying to make sure we got everything taken care of, cause if you look at what I read and what was on the written ones in your packet, those things were addressed before today.
Yeah, we're always constantly eliminating comments as we progress towards the meeting.
The written request is my hangup.
Sorry?
The response is my hangup. I'm not worried about the other stuff, but that written response is, that's crucial for everything else.
I mean, there's several weeks past that response, and it's still not in.
And, as I've told lots of, lots of engineering staff and developers, this I noted does not answer the question. You have to tell us how you are addressing it. I put it on the plans, I'm asking for a variance, you find it. Give us a response, yeah, so.
So can we do that in the future before it comes to us to make sure that that is done?
If you want to tell me that I can't put it on here, if I don't have a written response, you won't get another one without it. Or if you want five outstanding issues, you tell me what you want, and we'll, we'll make sure that happens.
If the planning department says, we need these addressed in a written response before it comes to the planning commission, I think that needs to be addressed before it comes to the planning commission.
I don't see that as any different request than when you say, are you someone who's been, have, you have the signature to represent someone else. You wouldn't, we wouldn't sit here and debate that. They either have it or they don't. They ever have the responses or they don't.
I'm all in favor of this being tabled if the applicant would like for that to be tabled.
Vote on it, if you vote it down, he's got to bring it back anyway, so. Do you want to request it to be tabled, or do you want it voted on? The question is yours.
I don't think it's going to hurt to vote on it.
So, if we bring it for a vote and it fails, we submit it and it comes back in December, correct?
Back in January.
January.
Or, I'm sorry, in January, yeah.
And if you table it, it comes back in January.
So it's the same either way.
Right.
Well, we might, might as well put it to a vote. Six in one, half a dozen the other.
First, we have to get a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
We need a call for the vote for the.
Oh, for the concept of detention, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I was just going to make one last comment. I mean, I agree with Mr. Powell as far as in the future, written response. I mean, if it doesn't have that, then we don't need to hear it in the future. I would say for me, on this particular circumstance, I mean, just listening to this a bit further, I don't think we'll have this issue from you guys going forward.
No.
In there, and, and what I'm hearing is, is that I think we're going to have a pretty, pretty strong sense of urgency as far as to address these things. That's just my comments associated with that. But if we have a call for the vote for concept of detention?
Call for the vote on the.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
And the concept of detention was okay? As is, okay. A comment about it?
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Concept of detention passes six-zero.
We need a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Covert?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Haney.
Haney?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
No.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
No.
It doesn't pass. Tie it out so it doesn't pass, so y'all have to come back in.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, next section, Board of Adjustments, B seventeen dash sixty, Southwest Springdale Forty-Nine LLC, thirty-eight twenty-nine South Gene George Parkway, variance for sign ordinance presented by Greg Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Greg Taylor with the Griffin Company Realtors, working on a project at the corner of Don Tyson and Fifty-Sixth Street, and we want to put up some development signs on the project, and we're asking for a variance on the signs.
We're outside the overlay district.
We're outside the overlay district, yeah.
That's why there's a sign variance. They can't have one if they were in the overlay districts, okay?
Staff comments?
I don't have any comments for this.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Let's do the commission. Call for the vote? Call for the vote. Call for the vote by Mr. Powell.
Powell?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Yes.
Adjustment passes six-zero?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, B seventeen dash sixty-one, North Lake Storage, thirty-nine twenty-four South Old Missouri Road, variance for modification of commercial design standards, presented by James Cook.
Hello, my name's James Koch, I'm the engineer for the large-scale development, and I'm also the representative for the variance request here.
Staff comments?
Tell us what you want to do.
They, the developer is wanting to consider the, the replacement of the old house that's the, that's there now functioning as the office for the storage units with a rail car that they will refurbish and install there in place of the old house. That is probably the best example of a caboose that I could find in our, in our region off of Dixon Street. That is the style of car that they're wanting to use. Of course, if, you know, they get approved to do this, then what they would do is buy a car, bring it out, refurbish it, clean it up, install everything that they need to install in order to make it a functioning office.
Has to meet building code, fire code issues.
That's right, yeah.
For it to be used.
I did have a.
How does it get tied down?
Well, this particular one was actually welded to the tracks, and they did have some tie straps to anchors, but, you know, I've never seen, well, I have, but they are pretty stable, so I know that there's some specific criteria that Ed's probably going to want to look at there. I did have a conversation with him and made the developer aware of it that, hey, look, you know, Ed's going to have some concerns, you know, in order to meet code requirements, be prepared for that. So, that, that is something that they are expecting to have to go through. If, if that is something that, that does get approved and they actually do this, okay?
But we don't know what the one that they're planning on using, we don't know what it looks like, they haven't, they don't have it yet.
Well, it's, it's not refurbished, and, and that's really all I know about it. So it is a caboose, it is not a refurbished rail car yet. That is why we're here, can we even do it? And so, you know, if, if you guys have some additional considerations that need to be addressed, I'm sure they would certainly be willing to do that. We just, we just need to know what that is, if it's something that you're wanting to do. It's such a rare thing here for this, I'm really not sure what else I can provide to you.
Staff didn't have any other comments from your other caboose refurbishing projects around the city?
It's very unique.
Very unique. It's at a location that you would not normally want, think you would see a caboose either. You know, there's no rail service anyplace close.
Well, they're setting the bar as far as what it should, I like on that, so. Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? To the commission?
So how far off of the right-of-way, or what is that plan on being?
Well, the, the, it's at the back of the existing house right now. I don't know if you can see the outline right there where I'm kind of pointing to where the existing office is. So it's probably an additional fifteen, twenty feet from that, so it's even further off the right-of-way than the existing house. To answer your question, I don't know what that dimension is right now. I may have that somewhere else, but it's not on, on the exhibit that I've got here in front of me.
So the entire house will be removed?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So, so at least it would give us larger front lawn than they currently have?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
I'm just thinking about people driving down there saying, oh, look at that, and we've got a concrete island-divided highway right in front of them, so.
That's right.
I, I think it's pretty unique, kind of intriguing.
The only thing that I'll say is, to me, it is cool, but it is, to me, it is akin to approving a variance on what everybody here at this doesn't like to do, is approve variances for modification to commercial design standards, and we have, we don't, we don't have anything. I mean, we just had, had a whole conversation about this exact thing, and we don't, we have a picture of another rail car, but not that rail car, even, you know, before or after it's refurbished or any, I mean, I just don't know how I can.
I agree with you a hundred percent. I, I think it's really cool, too. I think it's going to be something really neat that they can, that's going to separate them probably from any other storage building around. However, we can't make a determination that it's okay because it's just a storage car, but it's not okay because it's three buildings, or it's not okay because we have five things from them, but not okay because we have fifteen from them. If we're going to raise the bar of what the planning commission stands for in the city of Springdale, then we have to be consistent. And sometimes that means uncomfortable calls, and sometimes that means extenuating something thirty days till someone has time to pull it together. But we have to get past the, for lack of a better term, good old boy system of, ah, it's okay, we'll swing by the office tomorrow. You just can't do it. That's not, you're never going to get to the next level if you continue to play on the old field.
Exactly. I, I don't think it's any different than any other building that we would have come through.
I just want like an artist.
But it is unique.
My husband is a train buff, so I like trains, I've seen a lot of trains. There's a big variance on what a caboose looks like.
You're right.
So if you are telling us, that's not the one.
That's right. It's just, it's just an example of what a refurbished one looks like. That's correct, yes.
There could be a very wide difference from what you can find available.
Yeah.
And what you're going to do with it. So I think with something that unusual, we'd want to see a lot closer to exactly what you're going to do.
Yeah, and so what I, what I'm hearing you guys ask for is, is something similar to what other developments would typically be required to do, is to submit to you an architect's rendering or something equivalent to that, describing the color, the railing, the facade, everything about the actual.
The test represents that.
And, and then, and then, and then that's something that you could further consider here. And I just don't think that they were ready or willing to do that for this. They were more or less wanting to say, can we do it? And if that's something that we can do, then we'll meet, you know, whatever requirements they have, and, and that's essentially it.
What you're hearing is, everybody kind of likes the idea, but they can't approve it till they see what it looks like.
Yeah, and.
Probably the best you're going to get, right?
And, you know, on, on these projects and any other project like this, I explain that to the developers that are submitting, like, look, the more information you can give them, the more unknowns you can remove from this, the easier it is for them to approve it. So, I understand what your comments are, but, you know, he just, they're, they're wanting a unique item out in front of their business so that people can reference it by, you know, that item. And, you know, if that's what you're going to require, then, you know, hey, we can, and you decide not to vote for this, then I know how to advise them to, to bring it back if it is really something they want to do. So, fully understand what you're saying.
My recommendation is that we do table it, but that's up to you. Also, please.
Call for the vote and turn it down, he's got to do the same thing. Or you can table it.
You know, if I table it and they say, we just don't want to go through with it, then I can just call you and say, we'll take it off the agenda, so let's table it, okay? I, I take it that everybody is going to vote no until they see additional information, and that's kind of the assumption that I'm going to make.
Well, when you go back to them, I think you are hearing from this group, we like the unique characteristics and how it differentiates itself.
Yeah.
Just not enough information at this point in time to, to have a confidence as far as a modification of commercial design standards.
Sure, no worries, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, B seventeen dash sixty-two, Aaron and Pam Shigley, fourteen oh six Willshire Drive, variance for reduction of side setback from eight feet to seven feet six inches, presented by Aaron and Pam Shigley.
Hi, Aaron Shigley, fourteen oh six Willshire Drive. When they put this building up, I guess they measured a little bit wrong, but I've got my neighbor sitting right here to that east side, and she can tell you this is okay, but that six inches is not hurting anything. When I got the permit, they said eight feet from any permanent structure on the sides, and the only structure there is a fence.
Mike, you don't know, is, is Misha back there? I'm not sure how we got this.
Mr. Shigley got a permit on the twenty-first day of July. Ten days later, we do an inspection, the building's existing, it's a great-looking building. It appeared to be substantially in the rear setback and somewhat in the side setback. As it turns out, fortunately, it's only in the side setback the six inches. That's how we got here today.
Okay. So he built a building, and this is a fence that goes?
Yes, neighbors.
Okay, but what he says, what he's asking, okay, so this is really a setback variance for a structure, not the fence?
Right.
Okay, that's what's confusing, because it says you built a fence on the property line and encroached into the side setback by six inches. That's what threw me. I couldn't figure out how the fence got to be an issue, but it's actually a building?
It's the building that is six inches, closure to the fence and.
So was it advertised as a fence variance or a, it's a setback variance is what it was.
Setback.
Okay, so we should be okay? Should be fine. It's a six-inch variance, okay?
Any other comments? Okay, let's do the commission. Call for the vote. Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Compton?
Adjustment passes six-zero. Appreciate you guys for your patience this evening on here, so I was difficult to be the last one on that one, so. Director's report?
We're set for next Wednesday at, not back at six-thirty?
Sure, yeah, six-thirty.
Thirty. Hope everybody got, know.
We'll be out of town, but we'll be back for Thursdays.
You're going to be out of town.
Bebe, are you going to be here? Kevin?
I'll be here.
So it's the thirteenth?
It is the thirteenth.
And then Merry Christmas, Springdale is the next night.
As far as I know, we're going to be here.
I'm putting you down, so you better be there.
We'll put me down, put me down.
Because, Peyton, are you going to be here?
Thirteenth, yeah. Do we need to re?
I was going to say, if, I mean.
I've got it.
It's okay if we move it to January if we need to on there.
That's, that's the question I'm fixing to ask, we got several.
I mean, Dale's probably, probably won't be able to be here on that one.
Do we want to reschedule it for January instead of trying to do it in December?
It's six, it really, I would feel badly if you moved it just for.
We've got, we've got quite a few out.
You've got these three right here.
I'm just going to go ahead and make a decision, we move to January.
There you go. Good job, Chairman.
And what are we doing?
We've been here long enough tonight.
When in charge, take charge.
We're moving that to January, yeah.
Reschedule to January.
Oh, if you feel bad. I, I don't feel bad at all because of Bebe brought up.
All because of Mr. Covert traveling on that.
Why, thank you so much. While we're talking about the City of Springdale Christmas event, last year, Randy used some of the city planning commissioners to help run out stuff to folks, because there's so many things that Randy and his wife and all that team do a great job of pulling together. I told him that we would be there again this year for him if he needed us, so I volunteered mostly just you, Brian. But if you, if they, if they need help, we'd, we'd like to, you know, be there for them. So they put a lot of work into that, and we can help them if possible.
Very good.